Trustee Deland, support by trustee Riley. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Moving on to the presentation of the minutes from the September 2nd meeting. Comments, changes, or corrections to that? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve as printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as printed and file.
I support.
Motion by Treasurer Jackson, support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Moving on to consent agenda and communications. We have disbursements totaling $1,199,437.2. Questions on any of those?
I had a quick question, but I don't know where it is.
Okay.
But you had $1,000 for, oh, on page 11. In the top, to join in goal, soil removal.
Okay.
$1,000, what was that for?
That's a refund of a soil removable, removal permit. We require. That we put some money in trust in the agency. Should we incur any expenses related to that permit? Once their job is completed, that gets refunded, and so that's what that would be.
Oh, okay, so just like a bond?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That was all I got.
All right, seeing no additional questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and communications.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda in the amount of $1,199,437.2. Pay the bills and file.
All right, we have a motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Supervisor Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Yousakowski?
Yes.
Clark Rube?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, trustee, uh, Deland, sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Locurs?
Yes.
Trustee Riley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to boards and commissions. We have a few of those tonight. We have the road commission from August 19th, the road commission from September 2nd, and planning commission draft minutes from August 26th. Anyone have anything on any of those? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
I'll make the motion that we receive and file the boards and commissions meeting for minutes.
All right, motion by trustee Deland. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by Treasurer Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? There are none. All right, moving on to, uh, public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for a public comment this evening? Okay. Give us your name, please.
Anthony Damer, 4855 Wellington Avenue. I am here, speaking on behalf of the new business ordinance 138-3. 138-3, as I brought up to Ms. Rubel last Tuesday, on the 9th, about my cross connection check. She said there is a fee. She told me it's in the ordinance. Denise has told me it was in the ordinance. Emily has told me that it's in the ordinance. I get a copy of the ordinance. It's nowhere in the ordinance. So I bring it up to Ms. Rubel last Tuesday, and now it's in today's township meeting. According to some of the logs that I read in the state of Michigan, to pass a new ordinance, it must be public, the note, it must be published, note, to the public 15 days before that hearing even occurs. Today's the 10th. I brought it up last Tuesday, the 9th, so it hasn't even been 15 days to be publicized about a new ordinance going into place. And those ordinance that they're trying, that Ms. Rubel's trying to pass is the ordinance to be able to charge the residents of Campbell Township who have sprinkler systems to have, to make sure that the water doesn't go back into, to the drinking water. I understand that. It is a safety thing, different pipes, different, you know, dirt, stuff, and sprinklers. I totally understand that. But back in 2022, or, no, March 22 of 21, revised ordinance 138-2 was put in place for this, and it was, it stated that only businesses within Campbell Township are responsible for this fee. Only businesses. This ordinance was actually put in place back in July 7th of 2020, that dating the state businesses or residential are responsible for paying this fee. So how can we, as a township, go behind the residents' backs and try to pass the ordinance when it wasn't even publicized for 15 days before the hearing? I asked the board to deny this motion of 138-3 of the water sewer ordinance and keep it the way it is, and every resident that you guys have charged already for this fee, they are, they should get a credit back to their water bill or a refund of $60 that they've already paid, because they were told by this township, it's in the ordinance, and it's never been. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to old business. I gave you just a little update on some of the things we talked about last meeting related to, um, the audit. Most of these are fairly simple things, so we've taken action on the majority of them. In number two, which was payroll and compensation, we've developed sheets that we're going to pass out tomorrow to everyone, just to make clear what their compensation is, even though it's already, for the most part, in a, in a contract of some sort, but that'll just make that clear. Also on number three, we did meet with UHY. They gave us some things that would help Tom in making the bankrupts, reconciliations easier for him, so we'll be implementing all of those things. As far as policy and procedure, we did print off the time clock policy. We distributed it to all of the employees, and they've all signed that, so that one's all set. As far as escrow accounts, we are down to just one, so, and that was as of last Wednesday. These are the accounts where we're holding money for various projects. At the end of those projects, generally, they come and ask us for the money. Sometimes they just completely forget, and then it sits in there, so we've cleared all of those out except for one. If that one person isn't resolved, then we have to publish in a newspaper that it's, that it's out there, and if they don't reply, then we just move that into the, into the general fund, so. Budget entry errors, we haven't done anything with that yet. We're looking at how BSNA can help us ensure that, that those are, even though they're recorded, that they're properly posted, so. So that's pretty much it. Any questions on that? All right, moving on, we'll move on to the VC3 invoice. So VC3 used to be IT rights, so IT right was actually bought out by VC3 several years ago. The rates that we are charged currently is $13,200 per year. That's for all of our networking, all of our computers, all of our security, and all of our backups. They also use, do the, manage the antivirus, and they manage our server. I did, and the reason we hadn't brought this up before is because we felt that this was, there was no reduction from the past, and the services that they now provide us are somewhat smaller. For example, we no longer have email. They used to manage our email, so that's now all through Microsoft. The size of our backups now is greatly reduced because we've moved BSNA to an online software as opposed to on a, on a server. Until we didn't pay for it, I mean, I called, said, hey, what, you know, what's going on? I emailed, hey, what's going on? Why haven't we seen a reduction? Finally, they got to the point where they wanted to, to collect on it. I said, hey, look, we're not paying the bill until you talk to us about this. So we did talk to them at length. The average per seat license, so basically per computer station, is about 80 to 100, it depends on what they're doing, but 80 to $160 a month per station. If you add ours all up, it's way more than $13,200. The thing is, we're still on the old IT right pricing, and we haven't gone to the VC3 pricing. Thank goodness. So he said, if, look, I can put it back in with those changes, but I can guarantee you 100%, it's going to be a lot higher. So I said, well, don't do that. Let's just hold off on that. But I think we should just go ahead and pay this, and in the meantime, I think we should put together an RFP and put this out for a proposal for the renewal. That way, when it comes to renewal, we know that we, you know, we're being charged an amount that makes sense. Questions or comments on that?
Are there lots of different companies that do this, or this is kind of like an exclusive company? That deals with townships?
No, I, I think there are other, other people that do this, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, like, have already shopped around?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We haven't shopped around, but we need to, we need the coverage, right?
Okay.
So I'm a little bit concerned about just dropping. And one of the things that I told them is I, you know, we had a, a switch go bad in here. Well, a switch, you can just, I mean, honestly, we could go down to Best Buy and grab a switch. We had to wait, what was it, two days or something like that?
It was a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks for them to get a switch out here, which made, I mean, to me, it just made no sense, right? So to me, I think there's better, there's probably some better options out there. We just need to find them, but in the meantime, we, we don't really want to go without. I mean, there's been a lot of municipalities that have, have had security breaches in their systems, and that they can't get their information, you know, so we don't want to be in that situation, but at the same time, I, I don't necessarily think we want to just blindly continue to go with this company if, if there's other companies out there that can provide the same service at a, at a smaller cost, but we'd need to put out a proposal for that to kind of get some, some answers on who's going to charge what, so we can find out if it's reasonable or not. Any comments, questions?
I believe the ISD provides that service in this area.
I, I know we had, I think we had talked to them a long time ago about it, and I, I just, I can't, I think they weren't taking on, I thought they weren't taking on new people at that time, but that could have, I mean, that could have changed since then. Other comments, questions?
So this will take us through March of 2026 if we pay this invoice?
Correct.
So if we find somebody in the meantime, do they refund, or do, I mean, it's a contract, right?
Um, it is, yeah.
So we pay through March, no matter if we find someone else or not?
Correct, yeah.
Because most time, when they bid something out, they'll say the price is good for 30 days.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, I think we could start preparing the documents to, to put this out and specifying exactly what we want as far as the service level, and then probably like in December, issue that RFP, then we've got all of January to get them back. You decide kind of in February, and you're ready to go in March, so. That would be my recommendation, anyway. And this may be, you may be 100% correct. This may be a great price, and we may find that this is, you know, we just need to stick with this and not do anything else, but I can't say that for sure, so.
In the meantime, we can look at our options.
Right, yeah. Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion on that invoice?
I will. I'll make the motion that we pay VC3 $13,200.
All right, motion by trustee Deland. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Trustee Deland?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Yousakowski?
Yes.
Treasurer Jackson?
Yes.
Clark Rube?
Yes.
Trustee Locurs?
Yes.
Trustee Riley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to ordinance 138-3. This is related to cross connections. This is not a new ordinance. It's amendment to an existing ordinance. The existing ordinance in review, obviously, we have the right and, and a requirement by Eagle to inspect cross connections, just to make sure that they are, are properly connected and that there's prevention in place to present, prevent backflow from coming into the water system. Eagle requires that we check those periodically. We did have an ordinance that allowed for us to bill businesses, but it didn't allow us to bill residents for that, so not all residents have a cross connection. It's typically when you have a sprinkler system that residents would, would require this inspection. The ordinance allowed for us to bill businesses but not residential. The problem with that is, you know, there's a cost with going out there and doing these inspections. We're paying somebody to do these inspections, and the question is, who, who should pay for that? Who should pay for that inspection, and should it be the population in general, or should it be the person that has the cross connection? And in, you know, I, I think we've always tried to equate costs with those who are receiving the service, so it makes sense to charge the resident who has the service where we have to go out to charge that cost.
So I have a question about that then. So most residents don't install their own sprinkler system. So the person that installs it, what's, they got to get a permit to do that?
Yes, it's a real license.
They do, yeah. They do have to, they do have to get a permit to do that.
Is it included in the permit? Like, the person that installs it should pay?
Well, this is an ongoing thing, so you want to, you're not just chucking it at, at install. You're checking it periodically.
It's a five-year inspection.
To, excuse me, can you please quit interrupting? Thank you.
Why don't you hold up to your government's inspection?
Can you please quit interrupting?
Pretty shut up, dude.
If you don't stop, I will ask you to leave.
You can't. It's public work.
I can. You're being disruptive.
It's a public work.
What was your question? Can you repeat that?
I, I was asking, if the person that installs them, they pulled the permit?
Yeah.
And that has to be inspected once that's done.
It does, yeah. It does, it does get inspected and at installation.
But then you were explaining that it's not a five-year.
Yeah, but then, but then moving forward, you still want to check to make sure that that device is working correctly, just as we do with businesses. We check businesses periodically to make sure that, that that device is not, not failing in some way, shape, or form. If that, if that fails, there's a possibility of something coming back into the water system and then polluting the water, which certainly we don't want to happen. So you do periodically check these, based on a schedule that Eagle puts together, not, not the township.
Has Eagle reached out to us recently, letting us know that we had to amend this all of a sudden?
Well, Eagle doesn't have any, Eagle, Eagle didn't ask us to amend this. We're still in compliance. We're in compliance right now with Eagle, right, so this has nothing to do really with Eagle. The question is, who should pay for the inspection in a residential? Should it be, every resident should be paying for someone's cross connection? Typically, it's not the way you do, you do billing for anything. Typically, the person that's benefiting from the inspection is the one that has to pay for the inspection, right, so.
Do some.
So, excuse me, please quit interrupting. You had a chance to talk, and if you want to talk, there'll be another public comment period again.
Every time you go get the true facts.
Sir, if you don't stop, I will ask you to leave.
Go ahead and ask me, call the cops, they can't do nothing.
They can, absolutely. If you become disruptive, you, we, you can be dismissed from the meeting.
You ought to be, you ought to be a little professional.
But he's not giving the facts.
No, I'm talking now, so you listen when I'm talking. I have no problem with people making comments and talk back and forth, okay, but when you're told anybody out there, you don't hear us interrupting. Interrupting is ignorant. Now, I agree with conversation back and forth.
Dialogue.
But not when somebody up here is talking. If you don't like that, you shouldn't be here, and you can be removed, and don't think that can happen.
Go ahead and have you removed.
You know what, you want to be in a position to act professional, and that's you. You have to act professional.
He's my, he's my supervisor.
He's your supervisor.
Giving you guys false information.
I, you don't bring it up that way. If you want to step up and explain things to this whole board, that's fine.
I will do that.
But, but you're not going to sit there and interrupt every two minutes.
I said I wouldn't do that.
Don't interrupt me, because I won't stand for it.
I won't stand for it either.
Well, then, you know, you can call that damn door.
Do you realize that you are an elected official?
I am also an official that is not going to have somebody sitting there intimidating and causing a problem.
I'm not intimidating. Who am I intimidating now?
Well, you're.
That's false information.
Right now, you're being ignorant, because you're talking to me, and I'm talking to you.
Now you're saying I'm intimidating. That's false information.
You know what, buddy? I don't know why you're trying to be this way, but you are way out of line.
No, no.
Yes, you are. You are, you're very, sir, you're not professional.
I don't need to be professional to you guys. You guys are my government.
I'm not something.
You guys are my government.
You know what? Don't step on me.
Don't step on me.
Oh, for Christ's sakes.
I wasn't even talking to you. You jumped in. I was talking to you.
I did, because he's asked you not to a few times, and how many times do you have to hold your hand and act normal? Think about it.
There is a second audience participation.
But, but you guys are putting this to a vote now, so as you vote, so by the way to the end, you guys already voted, say, you say yes, how do you try to do a second announcement that you guys, the facts are already been, is pointless at that point?
We gave you an opportunity to speak beforehand, and you voiced your opinion on the ordinance at that time.
But you're saying something that's a little bit different now, Rob.
What have I, I'm not going to argue with you, because I haven't said any, I haven't changed my stance at all. I've been consistent on it the whole time, and I'm not going to argue with you any longer. So we're in a discussion. Please do not interrupt our discussion any longer. Click. Trustee Locurs, you had a question? Did you have a question, or was it that comment?
Yeah, it was just, what has sparked this all of a sudden? I mean.
It was just some inconsistency in the ordinance that was adopted previously, that did not give us a right to bill a resident. They give us a, a right to bill a business, but not a resident. And so, you know, the, and again, I go back to how we've operated all along, especially water and sewer. Water and sewer is one where, water and sewer is supposed to be a fund that never touches the general fund, right? It is supposed to be a self-sustaining fund. We can't overcharge residents for water and sewer, or we would get, we would get sued for it. We have to justify our expenses for water and sewer, and the fact that we hadn't been billing, didn't have in the ordinance to bill a resident was an error, and so that is, this is just correcting it.
Does DPW do these inspections, or does Mr. McKay? He's a plum, like, so he does the business.
Ken McKay does, does the inspections.
So he does the residential ones, too?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we have to have somebody per Michigan for the Eagle regulations that is certified in cross connections.
So like, let's say, like, for instance, Mrs., Mr. Damer, how many cross connections would be in that subdivision? Because there's not, I, I can't imagine there's that many cross connections in this township that have to be checked.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I mean, we could run some reports to take a look out of our utility billing.
I just feel like, because all this is all of a sudden being brought up, just circumstantially, as Mr. Damer's approached Mrs. Rubel, maybe we need to be a little more creative, because it looks very, just from what I'm being told, it looks very suspicious that we're all of a sudden adding this in as a resident's concerned about it. I don't.
I'm going to make a comment on it. As far as checking the cross connections or the backflow preventers on sprinklers, that's only come to us by Eagle, probably maybe two months ago.
2020.
No, not this. Not this. Eagle is, is the one that's putting this on the sprinklers.
No, 2020, you guys put in July 7th of 2020, 138-1, you guys put it in ordinance then.
That's not an ordinance for us. This is Eagle's.
Yes, Ms. Rubel signed off on it, so did Rob.
Yeah, that isn't what, oh, come on now, just.
I'm, I'm seeing.
We did, we adopted an ordinance when.
We adopted an ordinance, but this is, that was only on commercial.
No, that was, that was everything, all cross connection.
Exactly, I have a one.
And then 2021, you guys put in this adoption to charge businesses, not residential. So from 2021 till now, there has been no ordinance to charge residuals.
It's backflow preventers is what they're doing.
Vacuum breakers, and I watched the guy do my neighbor's house last fall. He was at the house for three minutes, didn't take a picture of that, walked downstairs, went to the water meter, because the neighbor went to home, I only had to open the door. Walked outside, looked at the vacuum breaker, walked away. And the funny thing is, her vacuum breaker is broken and is leaking.
All right, anything else, Treasurer Jackson?
No.
Any other discussion on the matter?
Um, I do.
Yeah.
So when we send out Mr. McKay to do the inspections, does he do it per address or per neighborhood?
Per address.
Per address. So how did we, how do we base the $60 fee?
Well, there's other, other responsibilities beyond that, so there's a lot of tracking that has to take place and reporting to Eagle that's involved with all of this, both from a, informing residents, doing the inspection, tracking the stuff, reporting it to Eagle, so there's a lot of steps involved with it.
It doesn't really seem unreasonable, $60 every five years.
No.
No, it, that is fine, it was an ordinance to begin with. The whole issue that I have, it was never an ordinance to charge the residents. I brought it up to Denise, I brought it up to Emily a number of times, and I, I was told by Denise, yes, we are not supposed to be charging you guys, but I'm told by Ms. Rubel, I must charge you. And she's like, I'm, I'm retiring. She bore me over to Emily, and Emily said the same thing. And they both sent me the ordinance that Ms. Rubel gave to them to give to the residents. And none of the ordinance with 138-1, which was July 7th of 2020, and 138-2, which was March 22nd of 21, states anything about charging the residents. It only states charging the businesses. Because like I said, to actually do the backflow, backflow tax inspection, I use an assault sprinkler. They used to have a plumber's license to do that. You got to hook up a machine. Then you got to turn on the water. Then you got to make sure that pressure doesn't drop. Like, if you're checking your AC unit, we've probably done that at your times, right? Like, that you check AC in your car, there's two pressure gauges, just like if you have your house, your AC unit. Then you got to make sure the pressure, the pressure doesn't change. The guy didn't do that. So what are we paying for? So if, if it wasn't in the ordinance, I don't have an issue paying anything if it's already been put in ordinance. I've been trying to get this connection checked, and I've been told I have to pay, I have to pay, because it's in the ordinance, which has been false the whole time.
So I think the, the thing is, if we have, if we have an error in an ordinance, we need to fix it, right? So when does it become, when does it become acceptable to do that? Do we have to wait till Mr. Damer's not upset? Do we have to wait three months? Do we have to, I mean, at what point do you fix it? I mean, and the reality is, you, you just, when it brought to your attention, you typically would fix something. You wouldn't just ignore it.
I, I agree, and, and I'm not exactly sure that Denise, or, and I'm not saying anything bad about either one of their job performances, but maybe they weren't the person to answer the question.
Right, yeah.
So.
No, they told me this is what Ms. Rubel always said when residents ask me. So I did, so I did that.
All right, any other discussion at this point? All right, do we have a motion on Well, I'll make it. I'll, I'll make a, a motion to adopt ordinance 138-3. Do we have support?
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion, we have support. Can we have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Yousakowski?
Yes.
Treasurer Jackson?
Yes.
Clark Rube?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Deland?
Yes.
Trustee Locurs?
No.
Trustee Riley?
Yes.
That's why, because it is a new ordinance. It has to be posted 15 days.
It's not a new ordinance, it's an amendment to an existing, so.
So I'm filing for.
All right, so next up, we have a tree at 1980 Allen Road. We do have the resident here. Excuse me, we're, we're in the middle of a meeting.
Mr. Riley was looking at me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, come on up to the, to the microphone. So I, we did, I did give you guys a, a picture of the, of the tree in question. I've talked to the road commission. It is in the road right of way. However, the road commission typically doesn't take a tree out unless it's, unless it's dead, just so, just so you know, so. So, but it is, it is quite a, it's quite a large tree, so. And I have some additional pictures here that, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Dennis Harcher.
Dennis, that Dennis gave us here, if you guys want to look at them.
That's a good one. I can see how large it is. Looks like it's an elm tree.
It's beautiful. I drove by it today. I know, I love it.
It looks like it has a split in it too. It might be just the part where it looks like the tree is splitting in that crouch that's.
Now you can see it.
Um, so when I, when I talked to the road commission, they, they said if we wanted to, that, that they would remove it. Uh, it would be at, at our expense. The reality is, at some point in time, it's probably going to have to come out of there. When, I don't know, but it, it may be in our best interest to do it now as opposed to later, but.
I would appreciate that.
But why would the township?
Yeah, I guess I have the same question.
Why would the township do that?
Well, it's in the road right of way, so we, it's a, that is, it's our road to maintain, so that tree is in the road right of way. So we would have to, at some point in time, take care of it.
Because you know this is going to set a bad precedent.
Well, I mean, I think you have to, I mean, you have to evaluate it honestly on a case by case basis. I mean.
I mean, we don't want it to fall on this house or the road.
There's a, there's a sewer that runs right in front of that tree too. There's a manhole covered there.
So there were.
Being so huge, I don't know if it's sucking off that sewer or what, but it's, it's a big tree.
Um, so I mean, what I could do is, you know, based on a motion from the board, I could get a, a work order from the road commission that would give us a price and then we could bring it back once we have that price to make a final decision on proceeding or not. I don't think it's going to be very cheap, but.
It's not.
No, it's going to be a lot.
Under the, under the conditions, I would, you know, I'd be in favor of it. And you want to look into it further to get priced, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, I, I think what we need is just a motion to get a work order from the road commission on that.
But certainly understands why you want it out.
It's Peter. I got a little house. You can see how small the house is there with that tree.
All right, so we have a motion on the work order?
I just want to look, I just got a couple of questions first. I noticed some stumps on the other side of the road that somebody's cut some trees off.
That's across the street.
Yeah, and is this a soft maple or is it an elm? I see that one's, that one's black walnut.
The stumps?
No, the, the live tree.
Oh, that's a poplar tree.
Uh, it's got rough bark, I don't know. Anyway, um, I'm going by my own experience. I had questioned about six or seven, eight trees across my property and across the road from me. The county come out and took those down for nothing. They dropped them. They did them. I cleaned up the mess, but the county dropped them. Now that tree there, it's going to cost a lot. The lowest price on a tree is twelve hundred dollars and that one would be five times that, at least. I just, it's, I think we need to measure the, the right of way part of it because thirty-three feet.
No, I, I, I measured it and then there's actually one of those pictures has, the road commission went out and measured and has a, has a dotted line or an orange line there. So it's definitely within the road, road easement.
Yeah, it's one of the, the odd poplar trees if it is because the leaves are different shaped than regular poplar trees. Anyway, if it's in the right of way, then they should be the ones taking care of it because it's going to fall on somebody's car when it dies.
Not only that, but, so, I mean, this tree's been here a long time. And we drive around our township, we see trees grown in ditches and under the lines and everything. Do we have an ordinance? People, you know, people get a house, have a new house and they plant trees and next thing you know, they're in the right of way. So how do, how do we do that with?
Well, I think the county road commission would, has, has rules and regulations where they relate it to their easement. You can't purposely plant, plant a tree in the road right of way.
But people do.
If you, if you go by my place.
And even if you drive down Scott Road, there's one that's like this side of the ditch. It's big. You know what I'm talking about.
If you go by my place where they took the other trees down, you'll see where I had put some new ones way much farther off the road, closer to the house. And that was, just made them legal. And I know Kathy had an issue with dead ash trees.
Doesn't the county say they own thirty-two feet from the center line into your yard?
No, they just stolen the right of way, the work in it.
Oh, when we just had the ditches down in front of our house still last, what, two years ago? They told us the county owns thirty-two feet in the middle of that road into your yard. If that's the case, if that's close to the road, the county should have to take it out.
Well, there's, there's different types of roads, so, and I know this is, it gets a little confusing, but there are roads that are local that we're responsible for. So Allen Road is one that we're responsible for. There are roads that are county roads, which county roads are responsible for, and then there's state highways. So there's a variety of different types of roads and, and how those get funded. So we're responsible for, you know, if we need to do any like roadwork outside of just patching a hole, if we were to repave, that would be our responsibility to repave that road. So we're also responsible for paying for any ditching on that road or any maintenance related to that, on that road, because it's a local road.
I'm just going to bring up one little experience where the tree's too close to the road. We had real high wind one March and there's a dead tree along the road. And so I'm going down, checking to see what's been blown down and everything. I wasn't even three seconds past that tree when it fell onto the road that I had just passed. So that's, that's another reason. That, that could have killed me. I mean, it was bigger than this, not, it was at least that big around.
Then who would be responsible if there was a lawsuit?
And we went out there. Neighbor's tractor and pushed it off the road. Now you go by there today and you'll see, still see the old stumps there.
All right, so, uh, do we have a motion to get a work order from the county on that tree?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we get a work order from the county road.
All right, motion by trustee Deland, do we have support?
Support.
Support by trustee Riley. Any further discussion? A roll call on that, please.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Riley.
Yes.
Supervisor Usekowsky.
Yes.
Treasurer Jackson.
Yes, I wanted needed out of there, but who's going to pay for it? That's different.
Who's got to remove the wood?
Clerk Rubel.
Yes.
You. Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Locas.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to get a work order from the county. I'll let you know when it's back on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the local road funding assistance program. These are due on September thirtieth. Uh, this is the program that we've used to, we've used it to pave Sparlingville Road. Last year, we paved Ravenswood from Range to Allen. This year, we paved Ravenswood from Allen to Wadums, which was amazing. I think they got it done in a day.
It's done.
I mean, it was like, wow. You're blanking, that was there, so.
It took them two days.
Um, so the, the road that we get the most complaints on by far, not even close, is Atkins Road. Um, I realize that we don't have a lot of residents that live on Atkins, but it is a pretty big pass-through road coming from everything north of there down to Wadums, so it is in really bad shape. Um, so we had two options. Um, we could, they could install what's called a wedge on the side, so basically builds up the sides and then they just lay asphalt over the top. Or they could just grind it all down and just put in a new surface. So for the longevity of the road, it makes a lot more sense just to spend the money to get it done, crush it and just redo the road. It was, I think, about fifty thousand cheaper to go the other way, but the, the length of life for that would be much smaller. So my recommendation would be to do that. Um, it is a match program, so the cost came in at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Uh, we would be responsible for ninety-nine. The county would match that at ninety-nine.
So my only concern with that is when they start that development over there, are they going to use Atkins Road? Heavy trucks and equipment, are they going to stick to Allen or West Potter or?
I, I don't think I've seen any proposal for anything to come off of Atkins. I think everything that I've seen has been off of Allen Road.
They want to have an entrance off of Atkins.
Are they, well.
I know it came up when we did Sparling Road because they were still doing.
Which one though?
Sand.
The Atkins Meadows, not the SSK.
Has Atkins Meadows submitted a proposal, a site plan yet?
It's, it's up in the air still. They have. We got to talk about it later on in the month.
Okay. So I mean, maybe we make that a
Yeah, when.
A requirement with the planning, Chris, that they don't use that. I didn't think, SSK is not really in a position to use that, I don't believe, based on where they're at. It wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to do that.
I don't see.
But for the other one, it, it may.
I don't see SSK going much.
I don't think it's going to go at all, but firstly.
He's kind of a, no, he's a different guy.
Yeah. All right, any other questions on Atkins Road or comments? All right, do we have a motion on that? So I did put in here that, so there's a resolution that we would be adopting. It would be resolution number twenty-five dash, I don't know what number we're on. Basically stating that that's the project we want to do and it would give Clerk Rubel the authorization to sign the application and submit it. That's on page fifty-four. Do we have a motion on that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash whatever it is, the repair of Atkins Road.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Treasurer Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Supervisor Usekowsky.
Yes.
Clerk Rubel.
Yes.
Trustee Deland.
Yes.
Trustee Locas.
Yes.
Trustee Riley.
You're doing this one in your report down here. Are you doing this one in your report down here? All right, any other audience participation?
Um, I would like to.
Yep, come on up.
My name is Michelle Erbman and I'm a deputy clerk. I just wanted to talk on the time policy, the missed punches, GPS, since I wasn't there. I wasn't here last two weeks ago. And I actually have not signed the policy and I think I emailed Rob about why. Some of my concerns are, it's a lot of pa, sorry, I'm really nervous. Um, it's a lot of paperwork. The paper form, in my opinion, is not needed. All comments can be put in the system for printout. I did share a copy of my time sheet because I do not mind people seeing my time sheet. That's totally fine. Um, and you can see at the bottom where I put notes. And then if a department head has any concerns, they can also put those notes at the bottom. So I just, that was, that was my opinion. There was also no mention of DPW within that policy. It was just fire and clerical. And I think DPW should have been included in that because DPW does come through our timekeeping. So, um, I wanted to say all changes after submitting the time sheet should be made with the employee's knowledge to avoid underpaying or overpaying the employee. We've had employees that their time had been changed from what they submitted and what they submit is their contract, what they're agreeing that they worked. And if there's any problems with what they worked, I think that they should be called in or spoken to directly before any changes are made. GPS, I wanted to just touch on that. I did cross out the name of the individuals there. But as you can see, and I circled it for the GPS, though that circle shows that they are well within the building area of their time. So it shows that when they punch in and when they punch out, that they are punching in and out at their work, place of work. And I, I agree with that and I think that's something that should stay. It does not track the employee throughout the day, just when they use the app. And it's only for those that use the app. If they use the computer at their workstation, there's no tracking because they're at their work. So that was just a little of my concerns about it. And I did want to say, trustee Deland, you had asked who UKG was last, or, my ending. Somebody asked who UKG was and it was said it was the cemetery. UKG is actually Andrew's Technology and that's the timekeeping program that we use. So that's where the payment was coming from. Thank you very much.
All right, any other audience participation? Yes. Sure. You want to, you guys step up to the microphone there.
Uh, I just wanted to know if you checked into the fencing situation behind my house?
We did, yeah. And if you want to hang out afterwards, I can talk to you about that, but we did look at that and we are, I'm not sure exactly where we're at and I don't have to look at, at the computer to see.
Okay.
But we did.
Can I have another question?
I thought Neil, Neil came out there and maybe you weren't, maybe you weren't there, but he did come out there.
Oh, no, I didn't see. Um, and I have a question. I just want to know what was going to be going on on Allen Road, why they were putting all the flags on the ground.
It's a great question. I don't know. So I, I have seen, I saw, you know, all right, okay.
Uh, PCE, who is our engineer, we're working on a project right now and you're out there measuring. That's why all those are here. It's for the, um, our sewer line that we've got to extend to go from, was it Pickford and, and Swiss Creek area, we're probably are going to go down the expressway possibly. We need to do a cooperation for the sewer.
All right, any other audience participation? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to officers' reports. I'll give my report. For those that don't know, the county commissioner that represented our district did resign on August twenty-ninth. Personally, I think we've had a rough stretch with county commissioners representing our district. It was Commissioner Bohm. I think Commissioner Bohm, I mean, he was good at certain things. Obviously, his focus was economic development and I, personally, I feel like our district kind of took a backseat because of that. These board members know that anytime we had any kind of meeting related to the landfill, Commissioner Bohm wasn't there. Commissioners that were there were Commissioner Samasco and Commissioner Torello. Commissioner Torello does represent a portion of Kimball Township, but not the portion where the landfill's at. Then we had, so Commissioner Philitz got elected. I think he had a difficult time relating at times with some of the, some of the other commissioners and it was, it was difficult for him to be effective. And I, I think some of his effectiveness was a little bit lost there. So I did put in for it. There are six, fifteen other people. So if, if by chance I get it, I, I don't know that I will, but if I did, I would not be able to continue on as supervisor. I would have to resign, so I already talked to the department heads last week, trying to come up with some kind of plan to make sure that things transition smoothly for the township, if it does happen. It may not happen, but if it does. So Thursday will be interviews for that. And I believe, their goal is to make a decision on Thursday. I can't guarantee that they will, but we'll know on Thursday. Once I swear in, I'll, I'll resign from this spot. You guys would then have forty-five days to, to find a replacement. Personally, I feel like, you know, I feel like this is one of our better boards. Firstly, I feel like, you know, I feel like this is one of our better boards. Um, no one on, on this board came on with a single-issue agenda. You guys all just wanted to serve the community, and I think it, I think it reflects in your decision-making, and I think you're doing an excellent job. I have a lot of confidence that the person that you choose, if, if this happens, would be the right person. So I've really enjoyed my time here, it's been seventeen years, um, so, uh, it's, it's a long time, but, um, I certainly enjoy it. And if I don't get the county commissioner's spot, I'll continue to enjoy doing it. So that's just the way it is. But, um, if I do get it, then, uh, we'll move on, so. All right, clerk Rubel? Oh, no, just hang on.
The fall cleanup is gonna be Saturday, October twenty-fifth, I've set a date. So I need for you to sign up for the time slots of either nine to eleven, eleven to one, or one to three. The newsletter is gonna be, I need to have information for the newsletter from the different departments by the twenty-fourth of September. And, um, the senior, Grace Senior Living, um, I have put a flyer in there, everyone is invited to it, okay? And then also, we did receive another ten thousand dollar grant, as I told you. But in your packet, you have a breakdown of the last ten thousand dollar grant that we received to help with our equipment. I found it, I didn't know I had. And our balance was left, we were able to get it down to two dollars and sixty-five cents, but we did not spend it.
Okay.
I have a question for you back here.
Sure.
Is that, um, cleanup date set in stone?
Yes, it is.
It's my grandson's birthday. Yeah, I love doing that cleanup, so.
Yeah, I had to, I have to get the newsletter out, so I have, had to get a date, so.
Okay, put me down for the earliest morning appointment.
All right, so you do nine eleven? On the twenty-fifth of October?
All right, uh, anything else for, uh?
That's it, mister Caro?
Husekowski, yes.
Treasurer Jackson?
Well, it's been a busy week, the class, uh, tax collection has come to a close temporarily, except for past two things. We did collect ninety-one percent of the taxes, which is a good lead to start with. We collected six million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. We needed, or we need to collect that amount. We collected five million, seven hundred and four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and six cents. All the township gets out of that is the administration fee, which has come to sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents. That is used towards paying for the assessors and so on. That's where that, that money goes. The rest goes to the county. The county is getting one million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and three cents. The state education's getting one million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and six, or six hundred and ninety-four dollars and nine cents. School operating's getting one million, one hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and seven cents. And school debt is getting six hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seven cents. The sinking fund for Port In area school district is getting two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. The rest is just being kicked down, uh, for Memphis School District. We just got two or three residents that live in that area, they get one thousand, twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, seventy-one cents, and a hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. It went smooth, uh, the people working on it, this has probably been the less error collection period that I've went through in sixteen years. They did a fabulous job with not making any errors. So this is good. Also, in all of this, I've been working on, uh, loans or for the new fire truck that's gonna become available. It's touch and go right now, one's for a seven-year plan is four point seven-three percent. The other one's four point five-nine percent, which if you're tallying them all up, it comes to about a difference of three thousand dollars between the two of them. Once you pay the, the annual payment for a seven-year plan, uh, with a hundred thousand dollars down is seventy-seven thousand, nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. For one, the other one is, so I get the right one here, seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Probably, I don't know if we should vote on that, which company you wanna go with, but, uh, they're not local, but they're used to doing this with a, setting up payments for, uh, fire, fire trucks.
Yeah, you just bring it back, but make sure it's in our agenda.
It'd be on the next agenda because I've still got some paperwork to complete on both of them. They all want a lot of more information than most people want. They want all your expenditures and revenues and everything you report for a year. On the financial end of it, cash distribution is setting at one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fourteen cents. Our public funds, uh, saving account, uh, that deals with the Grace Memorial is at eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Don't get alarmed at this figure, but it's not, it's not ours. It's gotta go to all the funds in the county. The tax account's at four million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Some has been distributed out of that already of the figure I gave you earlier. Trust and agency's setting at thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Water and sewer department's setting at one million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and six dollars and thirty-five cents. And then we got four CDs, these are up-to-date figures. Advia's at, uh, a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two fifty-seven. The two North Star ones, one is two sixty-nine, nine hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents. The other North Star CD Money Market is two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And Tri-County is at two hundred and seventy-two thousand, a hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. I'm thinking seriously of bringing that one back in and put it into Eastern Michigan because they tend to be paying more on our checking account than what we're getting on some CDs. So, for a total amount of eight million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. With most of that tax account gonna be distributed to the schools and the county operating. That's all I have.
All right, trustee Locers?
Um, we had a resident, I think she's here tonight, talking about the, her road on Burma. So I've been doing a lot of research on, uh, the things we can do in the township. And it's, like you've told me, it's kinda, we got our hands tied. So, um, I reached out to Phil Pavlov, I talked to sheriff King, and just trying to educate myself and learn more things on how we can, uh, make changes, so doing that. And then, uh, the complexity of my business, firstly, I get to be on the community and meet people all the time. So people always tell me their problems, sometimes more than I want to hear. But, uh, a few months ago, I had that idea to have an ordinance to protect renters of, from predatory landlords. And I met a few people that live across the street, and it really touched base with exactly what I was concerned about. They can't get things fixed when they move in, things aren't the way they're supposed, they're supposed to be, and they can't get any justification. So it, it really helps me lean into working on that ordinance more. Because again, as a lot of people told me, they don't want to have house checks. And I don't want that either. But I wanna have a system where if a renter in this township has a document, they can hand it in to us and say, hey. And not just a document, but litigation and language that says, hey, if a renter needs things fixed, you're not going to just raise their rent because you have to do your responsibility to be in their landlord. Um, so working on that still, and then I reached out to the city of Tulsa in Oklahoma fifteen years ago. They, um, they drafted a ordinance, and I think we can all agree on this, there's a store in this country that, they pop up like leeches and they just really hurt your local mom and pop business, and they're a billion-dollar corporation, so I don't think they're gonna be hurt if they can't grow more. Um, but the city of Tulsa passed an ordinance, I think I passed, I sent it to you.
You did.
And they created a nice ordinance that didn't focus on this company, but they really created hardships for them to be able to act as freely as they do protecting the local mom and pop small business. So that's what I've been working on.
Okay. I did talk to sheriff King as well.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna send some more patrols down that way. I also did look into, 'cause I had another resident on another street ask about, um, uh, the little bumps in the road.
Everybody's against that, but certain roads it could fit.
But you can actually, there is, uh, Michigan law does allow for that under certain conditions, so.
Burma's perfect for it, it's a dead-end road and it's.
We'll see.
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps, yeah.
Nobody loves a speed bump.
All right, trustee Deland?
Um, yeah, um, so I was approached by my neighbor and another resident, wondering if Neil has been on vacation. So I just called over to the township to see. So, um, they, they had questions about getting building permits or whether they needed one or not. And I don't wanna tell them, build what you want, you know? But does he have, I know that he's doing a lot with the, um, with the blight and everything like that, but does he have any actual set office hours where he can? I mean, he hasn't returned phone calls.
Yeah, just let me know who they are and I can follow up with him, but, um, he's here most days or in the field, I mean, so it's, office hours are kinda here and there because most of the work he does is not in the office, so.
Yeah. And, um, last meeting, there was another gentleman about the speed, um, speeders out on, was it Barth Road that he talked about? Well, it was kinda weird because, um, I had the occasion, I was getting off of sixty-nine and I got off at Taylor. And when you come around that curve, it's right smack on the corner of Barth Road, it's at fifty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Yeah.
Like only an idiot would take that corner at fifty-five, but, but I can see why they would 'cause the sign is so close to that corner that they might think that.
Yeah. That's a tough one, yeah.
It's kind of a curve, but, but, um, so I don't know if they can move that sign or, you know?
I can see if they move, yeah, I'll see if they'll move the sign, yeah.
Yeah, just, just another little bit down the road, and, and, um, let's see, so.
Anything else?
Um, yeah, just a real quick question for, um, mister Locers there. When you were looking into ordinancees, is Kimball Township landlords, can they join like the Port Huron Landlord Association?
I'm not sure.
If they're part of that, or?
Not sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's saying no. Yeah, she's saying no, she's a landlord.
Oh, yes, I know.
And no, you don't? Okay. All right, that's all I have.
All right, trustee Bowen?
I have nothing.
Trustee Riley?
Yeah, the only, uh, my man, I was on the blight, uh, last meeting. You know, we talked about, uh, how many, you know, the court case and that. Kinda like, uh, maybe if they could have that pass out to the.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Cause there's still people that are saying, yeah, we see a lot, and I hear someone saying that the gentleman that was here that night on his junkyard was very, very, uh, I thought, pretty darn nice what they accomplished and what they were doing. I mean, that's a full idea. And you got a lot of people, there's another one, and I can't tell you the name of the, the hotel, but is it really a motel that's more of around the corner?
Yeah.
They, uh, the, the grass was, you know, like sixteen inches high and, you know, et cetera. And the place, it looked terrible, but it had really taken hold. I don't know whether he got after him. Or if that was one of them he took, but I'd like to maybe give us a little heads up on how he's doing or how many he's got. He's got a bunch of court cases going on, just so we know what he's, is it, because there's, I can see some improvements, and that's good.
Okay.
Good for our residents.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else, trustee Riley? All right, any other business? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I do.
All right, motion by trustee Riley, support by trustee Deland, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.